Okay. I'll call today's meeting to order. Thank you all very much for being here. I'd like to introduce a few guests that we have. We have Rwanda and Scotty Ball from the Community Gardens, so welcome. And then also like to welcome our new CFO, Glennan Forky, so welcome aboard. And with that, would everybody stand and help you recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. ... in the United States of America, in the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating and just as strong.
Jeremy's coming. I'd like to take this time to read Dodge City Community College Mission Statement. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. This is time I would ask that if anybody would like to address the trustees, they may do so at this time. Okay, Tina. Jeremy, welcome. We're just now getting underway, so I'll let you get situated. Next on the agenda is approvals of minutes, so I'll give you all a chance to review. I'll take a recommendation at appropriate time. Have it moved to approve in a minute? A few minutes? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, motion is second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. All right, little completion of agendas. On your table should be some additions or just some changes. And is there any revisions to the consent agenda as presented? Seeing none. All those in favor of approval of the agendas as presented and amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I left you out there. Maya was that an aye in favor of approval?
Yes.
Okay. All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Next up, we'll do the reports to the Board of Trustees. First up, Student Government Association, Ms. Solnem Daras. Welcome.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. This is your person, President Mulkey. Before we start off, I would actually like to introduce our Vice President, Abeshea. I don't think you guys have my name. We're all good at this, and we're close enough. He will be our next year's president, so I'm wanting to kind of start seeing how our meetings go, and so don't scare him too much.
You're trying not to.
Okay, there we go.
Welcome.
Tonight, we start off with PTK. They have their seat for a college competition plan. They had a total of 45 people. Five of them were PTK members, 36 were not, and four were unmarked. Their sampler day is tomorrow, October 17th. It's like an orientation for people that would like to be interested in PTK. Also, they are thinking about doing a Pumpkin Patch party with Mr. Rickenmore, so it's not a huge party party, you know, so it's like a fun thing, so don't.
Let's hope not.
He's the party animal of us.
That's right.
That's your last year too, right? It is.
It is, yeah. So we're trying to take advantage of that and enjoy that. Don't talk to you more about what we are planning, so we're just going.
Good.
And they are also having their conference, their Honors in Action Conference, November 2nd through the 4th, and they have a couple of students going. The Student Nursing Association was selling shirts, jackets, and bottles. They, the price was, they had different prices for each. They were, I think they were going to donate the money for the mental health awareness. They were also conducting a camp food drive this whole month, and they will be having their new board members on October 22nd, which I believe is their next meeting. International Club volunteered at the vote registration drive on campus on October 9th and the 10th, and they will be attending the Halo Encuentro on October 22nd through the 23rd with Mr. Australia. And that's a really fun event last year with them, and it was a really interesting and very fun way to learn about leadership and the Hispanic culture. The DC3 Cosmetology is hosting a ladies' night out where they will be showing people who are interested in the cosmetology department, the wonderful services, and will also have vendors selling their fabulous products on November 6th, if you would like to go ladies. And gentlemen, I mean, why not? The elementary education program will be doing a preschool STEM night with the help of the DC3 STEM program around November. And the Nerd Union will be having a game night on October 26th at 7:00 in the library. And the Quiz Bowl, their first competition, is on Saturday, the October 20th. So that sounds fun, I'm excited for them. And we host, the NCHA, Student Government Association, hosted a blood drive at the Student Union on October 3rd, and a virtual reality event. It was really fun. I don't know if you guys ever heard of that, where you put like a little helmet on your head, and it's like, you see the game. It's like 3D, you know, it's really fun and exciting. So it was good seeing you all, and I hope you have a great night. Any questions? No? Thank you.
Thanks, Glennan. Okay. Next up, we'll start with trustee reports, so we'll start with Terry.
Hey, thank you. I just wanted to express my appreciation to the City Commission for their paying us a fair price for the land that we've sold to them. $500. They actually gave us $270,000. They didn't have to do that, they had a contract for 500, but they did the right thing, and I think we should all be appreciative of that. So I wish to thank them.
That's all. Okay. It's $270,000 and $72.
That's almost 90,000 acres.
Better than farming. Most things are.
Especially when it's wet and you can't cut the mile.
This is empty.
I want to say kudos to the students again. I'm always impressed and pleased with the caliber of the students that we see, and I'm glad when any of them are in our board meetings, it indicates that we're, that they are not intimidated by board, and also that they are interested in what's going on. And I appreciate when there are students in. So any others are welcome, whenever you would like to do that. There are several things that are, that I have found interesting since the last meeting. One of them was the music rehearsal for the workshop that the choirs from across the state had, excuse me. And I was pleased that they were here on campus. And another one, maybe I'm remembering past the last meeting, but for the high school students who were interested in the tech and manufacturing in the area, that we got to have them on campus for lunch. And thank you to the nursing department again. They had an advisory board meeting last night, which I had to miss, but I appreciate that they are reaching into the community with that sort of meetings to react and listen to the people that are in the community. And as Terry said, thank you to the city. That was a really interesting meeting with the report on the good things that are happening in town, and there are a lot of them. So we should be proud and supportive of the things that are going on that we appreciate. Let me see. We talked some, have mentioned in some of our meetings about the concern across the country for the enrollment that is down in colleges. Not just community colleges, but it's down in universities too. And as you realize, the ratio of employment and jobs that are available and the tenor of the economy, people are working. And when there aren't jobs, they come back to the colleges to get some kind of training so they can find a job. So I think that is not as detrimental as we think it is because it, as it looks like on the surface, because it will give us the opportunity to reevaluate, to reinvigorate, and be sure that we are offering the things that are needed in our curriculum. So I see that as a concern financially, but not really for the overall picture of how we're educating our people. So that's one of the things that I've been thinking about a lot. I think that's about it. The, want to appreciate, want to say thank you to Andy and Jake and our illustrious Master of Ceremonies for the show at Gemin Petro, because I know it attracts attention among people that are watching for the news and are interested, especially in athletics. So thank you for doing that. It's an outlet that is upbeat, and we need to do that too. So I guess the other thing that really is especially interesting to me is the interest from the community, again, that is heightened for the establishment of mid-level health college courses. So we're hoping that that moves quickly, and we at least know more about that soon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Maya, are you hearing everybody okay?
I am, I am, Mr. Chairman. The only two days I would like to speak about behind the door, oh, was it the Manufacturing Day, which was outstanding, I hope that one of many that tried that kind of thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right. What I'd like to do is just talk about, you know, the efforts that the Foundation is putting on for our gala coming up. I think Mrs. Hazel Horace has just walked in, and Greg Golf and many others are doing a great job in the outreach to the community, giving a lot of support, and so my hat's off to all of them and the community for expressing that kind of support. So my hat's off to Foundations. Jeremy?
Well, Gary just stole everything, because we just had a Foundation meeting at lunch today. I was going to steal yours this time, and he just stole mine, so I'll throw my two sins in. Everybody watching here at home, please come to the Foundation Gala, Dinner and Auction, Friday, November 2nd at 5:30 here in our Student Activity Center, and also from the Foundation today, and Chris, I'm sure will be elaborating further in her reports. The Foundation is doing some wonderful and great things. They are releasing all the information as quick as they can on all the great things that are happening, but there continues to be more and more good donations and gifts and blessings that people are bestowing upon our college, and we need to continue to be thankful for all those and thank all of those people. And so for anybody that runs into those folks who you hear their names, tell them thank you, because they're really putting that extra effort out to help support our college and support Dodge City and the community. So, and the Foundation itself is doing a phenomenal job, their growth and merging with endowment and continuing to grow that and develop the unified body is really impressive to see, and I think they're making great strides. Chris is doing a phenomenal job leading them as well, so that's all the report.
Sorry about that, Jeremy.
I even made it to meet sometimes at that meeting, I didn't make it this night.
He was on time.
My turn?
Yes.
Okay, I too. But Chris, I have a check for you to guarantee my spot and Dawn's, and I hope he brings a checkbook, so. I love those things. I love those things. And I wanted to say thank you to all of the faculty and staff that was there for our work session yesterday. It was so good and so beneficial, and you guys answered all the questions we had. We were able to discuss and understand where everything was, so that if I had a question, I had it answered. So I appreciate all your effort and your work and everything for us yesterday. It was nice. I appreciate it.
And I'm working with the 5th day of Kappa for our fundraiser out at the Pumpkin Patch, and hopefully we'll have a successful night for them and a fun night that they all can enjoy. It'll attract a lot of kids out there to help with fundraiser for their group, so we're working on it.
Mine, I add that I so appreciated yesterday's work session. I found it very, very helpful.
Thank you, Florstein, and you know, I will act as that sentiment, I have just really, my hat's off to the staff, the administration, for the quality of reports that we're having out. I'm just very impressed with them. It gives us the information that we need, so thank you all very much. Okay, next up, Vice President Tamont will give us an enrollment update.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity, like we do once a year in October, to give you our detailed enrollment report. I know that those of you that have been on the board for a while will recognize this report. Some of you that are new, we try to break down as many categories as we possibly can. For example, I'm often asked, well, how many Ford County students did we have? Did that increase or did that decrease? Well, how many out-of-staters do we have? All those kinds of things. How many Kansas kids? And so we have this all broke down for you, and if you take a look at this report, that's one of them I wanted to talk about. We gave it out at the board work session yesterday, and I believe Carla emailed it to everyone, so hopefully you've had that for a while. And then also, I've placed at your places a semester part real-time enrollment report that was as of 4:00 PM this afternoon, and we want to thank Mike Webster for putting that together. It arrives three times a day, at 8:00 AM, at noon, and at 4:00 PM, and so that's very helpful for us to watch real-time enrollment, and I'll explain that in just a few minutes. If you look at the first page of the first report that I referred to, you can see that this is credit hour report. This is literal generation of credit hours by categories, and it's the 20th day. So I wanted to clarify that. On the 20th day of enrollment, the Board of Regents requires us to take, at the end of the day, a snapshot, if you will, of exactly what our enrollment was on that 20th day. And those are our preliminary reports that we send in. Then later in the semester, towards the end of this month, we will finalize and send the final numbers in, and those are very critical, because that's what funding and FTE, final equivalence and things like that, are determined. You may have heard that the Board of Regents this year changed the way that they're tracking enrollment. They used to use credit hours and head count, and this time, for the first year ever, they use full-time equivalency. And so they broke that out based on your total credit hours divided by 15, which they consider 15 credit hours to be full-time, and then they came up with a total FTE. So that is a change with the Board of Regents that I wanted to make clear. They sent out a press release, the Board of Regents did, all over the state of Kansas that shows the FTE equivalent increase or decrease that was based on those 20th day numbers. When that went out, a number of people asked about enrollment and where we were at. That specifically explained increases and decreases, so then at a later time, we decided we would respond with most of the questions we were getting, which is how we're going to, we have a decrease in enrollment, and so we wanted to communicate in a press release what our plans were to make up for this deficit in enrollment, so that we're back on track by this time next year. And in a three-year plan, we are going to be recoup, not only recouping this, but showing increases again. If you take a look down the page, you can see on the credit hours, you've got breakdowns on day, evening, what we used to call guided studies, the old system still prints it out as guided studies, but it's actually independent studies. And now that particular type of class is only used if a student is ready to graduate and they need that particular class, and they have independent studies. But you can see, last year, it was down to only 66 credit hours, and now this year, it's down to only 51. So that was one of the things that was intentional, that it would be a decrease. Okay, then you look at freshmen, high school, sophomore, and the next column is the one that everyone really is interested in. Ford County, Kansas resident, out-of-state, international. I often get questions about HB 2145. That is House Bill 2145, and if a student is not a U.S. citizen, but they choose to complete an affidavit with our records office, then, and they graduated from an accredited Kansas high school, then they are able to attend here and charge tuition rates for a Kansas resident. I would say you can see that that dropped from 85 down to 10, and this is a trend that we've seen over about the last three years. It was even higher than 85 the year before. We're losing a lot of students that are in the DACA process. So that is a drop, and is concerning to us. If you look at male, female on the credit hours, we're down with the young men by about 13 percent, females about 5 percent as far as credit hour generation. We have more part-time than full-time students, so that is another trend that we're watching very closely. If you go back to the back page, you'll see the head count, and I think there's some interesting things here as well that we're paying particular attention to. Credit hours, you can see the number on the first page, down about 9.65 percent, and that is what, by and large, generates our revenue and things like that. I think if you factor in that we had 168 aviation students last fall, and then we do not have 168 now, that was a significant drop. And then in our vocational hours, you can see that reflected on the academic hours and the vocational, because you, on the first page, you've got a minus 7.63 percent in academic hours and a minus 15.52 percent. Okay, we know, and if you read all of the reports from all over the state, the community colleges and the universities that were down in enrollment, I was watching them with great interest, because they would typically cite national averages, how enrollment is down at community colleges. They would cite economic factors. You know, we had the unique factor of the aviation program. However, we want you to know that although those may be reasonable explanations, that we are not satisfied with this decrease in enrollment, and so we intend to roll our sleeves up, and we intend to turn it back around. We're going to replace the drop that we had in the aviation students, because it's unknown the timeframe there on when that would return, and so we're going to try to make up for that. We have a number of things planned. Our peer institutions, I saw a report earlier today that shows projections for high school enrollment through 2030, and it shows drops in all of our immediate service area, with the exception of Garden City, Liberal, and Dodge City. So we know those are areas that we need to focus, and we know we need to go to other parts of Kansas in particular. We were not actively recruiting Kansas residents that were to the east of here. You know, I think that over the years, historically, we've got lots of students from places like Poisington, Claflin, you know, central part of the state, and then the surrounding smaller areas around Wichita, such as Winfield and Derby. Those are some historical areas that we've been able to draw from. So we're going to go back out and roll up our sleeves. We're hitting a number of schools and college fairs, technical fairs, that we had not been to in, from what I can tell, in the last two years. Okay, this report, that's a real time, you'll see it shows for fall, 17,239. Why is that important? It shows that we have not dropped below this. Normally, there's cleanup of our rosters, people decide to drop a class. We've been able to hold our own there, and we've been able to actually go up 30 credit hours. So that's kind of unusual, and it shows that we're retaining the students we have now. I think we can look at some things like our early alert system. We can look at our counselors that we have added, and that, an important part of enrollment management is retention, so we're focusing on that area as well. Tonight, I want to introduce Louis Mize. I think he got here. Yes, he is here. And I'm going to ask Louis if he would come up and talk to you. He's our Director of Enrollment Management that we added when we knew, we specifically wanted to hire someone with Louis's abilities. When we talked with, we spent the summer and later in the spring talking with counselors at our service area schools, and they, we asked, how are we doing compared to our peer institutions? And they indicated that our presentations, by and large, were kind of average, and that some of our peer institutions were maybe presenting their institutions in a manner that was more appealing to the high school students. And they didn't say we were bad, so I don't want to leave that message. They just said there were some others that were providing some extra. Well, we want to roll up our sleeves and we want to be better than anyone else. We want to be better than our peer institutions. So we're retraining staff, and Louis, some of you that know him, he worked here for six years before, over in our Residence Life area, so he's very familiar with the service area. He's very familiar with high schools and students in this area, and Louis is somewhat of an actor, so he knows how to present.
Somewhat. He's a very good actor.
He'll get me for that later, but he, he's retraining and he's adding presentations that are particularly appealing to high school students, and we're doing that by providing links with alumni who have come from those high schools. That is very appealing, and our enrollment management information tells us that's one thing we should do. So I'd like to ask Louis to come forward and talk a little bit about what they've already done this year and what they're planning to do. He screeched in at the last minute, because he got up early this morning and drove all the way to Wichita and went to a career technical fair that we had not been attending, that we were at, and then he turned around and drove back here to be in here at the board meeting in time. And he'll tell you where our other admissions representatives are this week and where they've been. Want to step up there? Louis Mize.
I apologize, because I'm a gentleman. I am not used to standing behind a podium, so yay. Hi, I'm Louis Mize. Some of you may know me, some of you may not. I was Director of Housing for almost six years back up until 2013, moved to Wichita to be an actor and support my wife and her career as an actress as well. And then I finally got to have the privilege of coming back here in January as Director of Housing as well, and then get to step into the lofty shoes of Director of Enrollment Management, and I'm honored to do so. The numbers that we saw, yes, a national trend, and as Bev Tamont said, we are not satisfied with that, and so we are doing everything within our power to get those numbers up. So the correct terminology is whatever it takes. We have gone to over 30 high schools already, personal visits. I am putting an emphasis on personability. That's not a correct word, it's the one I'm making up. It's very important to have that interaction, not only with the students, but with the counselors as well, so I'm putting a re-emphasis on that. This also includes the CPCs, what we call college planning conferences, which is what I went to today in Wichita. They, it's the Wichita Futures Fair. There was well over 60 different colleges there, and a total student count, from what they told me, just over 1,000, and that's mostly the Wichita area's students and the surrounding areas. I have a very different approach than some. I also have, as well as my acting background, I worked in retail. background, I worked in retail. And to me, the only way you can get a sale is if you believe in what you're selling. I believe in Dodge City Community College. I believe in education, and I believe in the future of those students. It is my goal, and I want my staff to know, the goal is not only to get students here, is to make them successful while they are here, and to find the next step in their journey. That is why retention is very important on my agenda, and I'm working with the Connection Center as well as Trio, trying to build some, we're actually hosting our first transfer fair, I believe, that we've ever had, this coming October twenty-ninth. That was kind of spearheaded by Karen Gustafson and Chloe Wurst, and they asked admissions to be involved, and I was very happy to be involved with that. I do want to give some props to my staff, because the very following Monday after they visited Moscow, the entire senior class scheduled a campus visit. Well over twenty students, that's always nice to hear, and I've gotten a lot of good feedback in person from a lot of the counselors, saying that the presentations have gotten a lot better. I sent them on some sessions at CACRO this year on presentation, the power of presentation, and one of the things that they're really excited about is opening with a joke. Apparently, that had never occurred to them. And so now, one of the things they do, I'm not sure if you know Josue Gomez at admissions office, him and I have something in common, we, and I think President Nolte as well, we like to wear fun socks. I'm wearing rubber duckies today. Josue, he likes to wear Flash socks, superhero socks. And so one of the things they start off with now is, we have the students fill out information cards, and they'll put a guess as to what Josue's socks are that day, and they get the top prize through our giveaway options. So that's something fun that they're doing, and we are definitely getting in contact with our alumni. And I, obviously, I'm not sure if anybody remembers Derry, her name was Rogers at the time, she was a former student. She's now the counselor at Simran, and so she's been a very good contact for us so far. We also have alumni in Buffalo, Oklahoma, J.J. Manning, he stayed, he was here for a couple of years before he transferred out. I actually knew him in high school, because he was a youth pastor. I knew there. It's nice finding these old connections that are beneficial now to the college. It's beautiful, really. I have started going back to the Panhandle of Texas, which is kind of my home turf. I just came back from Perryton, which we have never been to the Perryton College Fair. I got thirty students to sign up for more information. There's a big interest in the area from cosmetology and education and a lot of our tech programs, which is exciting. I've been working with Ryan, trying to get the, and his tech staff, to find out exactly what they want and where they would like me to go as well, because we are, we do not have a tech admissions rep currently, so we're kind of scattering that responsibility between myself and my two staff members. It's exciting for me, because it means I get to go back to my old home turf of Texas, the Panhandle, as well as Oklahoma, which are some areas that we have not been recruiting as heavily as we could have been, and talking with the staff that's where a large number of their students were coming from at one point. So I'm excited to be bridging that gap again. We are going to the Hutchinson Career Expo November sixth and seventh, which is a very large career expo that we have not gone to. I don't know the exact time. I know we haven't been there the last two years, so I'm not sure anywhere past that. And like Bev said, through my research, for some reason, at some point, we decided to stop recruiting on the eastern side of the state. I understand it's tough to recruit, but you have to have a presence to even have a chance of getting those students. So we are making a presence in that area going forward. Let's see, Laverne Career Fair. We haven't been to Laverne Career Fair in a while. A lot of these, especially in Oklahoma and Texas, I'm working with Ryan and his staff to take them as well, so that they can actually be there and they can see who their future instructors are going to be. One of the other things I'm working on is with Josue. I want to do more towards our Latino, what they refer to now as Latinx community, our Hispanic community. Obviously, we have a very large base there, and there's no reason why we cannot get those students to enroll here. So that's going to be a focus of mine as well. And when I say I'm working with Josue, I sent him to Diversidad this year, which is a conference specifically designed on how to recruit those types of students. It has not, we have not had anybody go to that at all, ever, as far as I know. And on top of that, I'm having him translate. I've had him work with Andrea on a few things as well, translating a lot of our media and recruitment materials into Spanish. And I want, at some point, I'm not sure if Mike Webster knows this, I'd like to have those options online as well. Sweet. The other thing that I really focus on, those of you that do know me, I have a very unique sense of humor, and I've talked a little bit with Andrea on this as well. I want to do some marketing campaigns through social media, which, when I took over the job, I found out our Twitter account for DC three admissions had not been used since two thousand and sixteen. So I hunted down the access for that, thanks to a former admissions rep for us. He was able to give me that information, and now we are up and running on that, and we've increased our followers on that, up to, I think, fifty we've increased already. But again, when you haven't used it, any number is a nice number. I've also created and started using Instagram. I plan on expanding on those all areas, but I want to do some more video campaigns, and that's something I want to work with Andrea and them on. Again, I have a unique sense of humor, so bear with me. One of my ideas is to do a virtual tour of the college with a spin. I want to have it be sped up, the video, and have the tour guide literally out of breath by the end, as if he was running the tour. Studies have shown that this kind of really gets to the youth of today, because everything is through video recruitment-wise for the younger audiences. I still want to do recruitment towards the parents as well, and they react to letterhead. I know there's this big thing about going away from paper, and I understand that, cost, budget, it doesn't attract the youth, but that attracts the parents. So it's going to be more of a joint campaign. And I realize I'm all over the place with my description, but I'm very excited about the potential and opportunities that we have, and I'm glad I get to be a part of that growth that's coming. So, yeah. Any questions? I talk fast. Ms. Hampton?
Well, I had a point to make with Bev and with you that we had discussed before. I was visiting with a lady who was friends with a student who is undocumented, and she wanted to know if he could get scholarships. So can you address that?
Undocumented, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, they are available for scholarships, but not federal financial aid.
That's correct.
That's correct.
But we do give scholarships.
That's why I referred.
They are available to get institutional scholarships.
Since he's not a citizen, he cannot get any federal money.
Correct.
But he can get Ford County scholarships.
Yes, institutional scholarships, they're allowed.
And that's why everybody should be at this foundation.
I do want to point out, I am ticket number one, so I am very supportive of this.
I was ticket number two.
Yeah, they're too late, and I still don't know.
It's not first.
That I couldn't, my wife would not let me.
I have to say, Linda, I see an opportunity for you to work with him and that cam being his partner running through the college. I see this in your future, dear.
Yeah, that would be good.
Honestly, student involvement with that, with those kind of media campaigns are very important. So, yes. My office is downstairs, two oh six. Jeremy?
One, I'd like to, Louis, not just for you, but for Bev as well, but, or Dr. Nolte even. One of the numbers I like to see, and unfortunately, yes, there's a lot of negative percentages there, and we're sad to see that, and we're most appreciative that you have a plane going for. That's what is very reassuring, very good to hear, that we're not resting on our laurels and just, oh, well, this is where it is everywhere. But one of the numbers I'm excited to see, and I hope that we can, maybe you guys can pin down as to why the number's up, but our high school enrollment numbers has increased, and that's phenomenal. And it's one of the things I really have always said, ever since I've gotten on the board, that I wanted to see our high school enrollment numbers increase here back in my day, and walked up to the boat, we did that stuff.
My honest opinion from my short time here, Ryan Osman.
Thanks, man.
No, seriously, just speaking with him and TJ, who's our outreach coordinator, they are very passionate about what they do, and they want not only for the college to succeed, but the students and the high schools that we outreach to be successful, and...
And maybe Ryan.
Yeah, well, yeah, thanks, Louis. I really appreciate it. So, yeah, over the past couple of years, we have made a conservative effort to increase our footprint and bring awareness to our concurrent enrollment program. Just as recently as the manufacturing day that we had here on campus, we had a hundred students. One of the things that I spent the majority of my speech on or talk on was concurrent enrollment opportunities through the community college. So we laid some really good, really good foundation in conjunction with Dr. John over the past couple of years, and now we're just starting to see the, we're starting to see some fruit from that work, from being intentional, being sensitive to needs. I don't know if that's the correct terminology, making sure we're meeting needs, communicating. We've got other things in the works as well. We've got some plans with Dodge City High School, how we can increase what we're doing here on campus, as well as there on the high school campus, which we haven't done much of that in the past, but Dr. Ward and I will be working with Dodge City High School on actually offering college-level courses at the campus, which we haven't done in the past, although that's been on this side of the street. So we'll be continuing to work with them on that. Normally, I, not at a loss for words, but, yeah.
Dr. Presley, I would also commend the high school staff, the Dodge City High School staff. Last spring, they started having joint meetings with a number of us, and we looked at everything from the testing process to the enrollment process, how we interface. We did some extra efforts, and our staff started going over there, enrolling, and testing, and coordinating things with them, and they've been tremendous to work with. So I want to give them credit.
And Jackie was there at the manufacturing day. She's the best principal I've ever seen in my career, and does an absolutely wonderful job. And she is so enthused and excited, and she was there to talk about us developing relationships, and that was really cool.
And their counseling staff has been tremendous working with us.
Well, thank you all for all your efforts.
So, yeah, I appreciate what Louis said, but it truly has been a team effort, starting with Dr. John, Dr. Ward, Bev, admissions staff. So TJ Ackerman, I don't know if you've ever met him, he more or less handles our day-to-day on the concurrent enrollment side, Charlene figure. So, yeah, just as a college, we've made a concerted effort to put some focus in that area, and we're starting to see some fruit from that.
I will add to that comment that Dr. Presley had, is before me coming on this board, you know, some administrators from some of the neighboring schools around, you know, criticized the college for not that kind of outreach, and they used to have those types of programs. So when I saw this number jump, that's telling me you guys are getting out there and building those connections again, so I do applaud you for that.
I'd like to have a question.
Sure.
Maybe another explanation or an observation about this House Bill twenty-one forty-five?
Uh-huh.
I mean, it is true that K through twelve doesn't require citizenship papers, right?
That K through twelve...
And I mean, when they enroll in K through twelve, they don't have to show that they're a citizen, right?
That is my understanding. I don't think that's changed.
Same way here.
Well, okay, they can enroll here. However, in order to get the Kansas residency tuition rate, they have to do the affidavit and declare...
Well, how is, I mean, how is that rate any different than the Ford County rate?
Okay, otherwise, they would be charged for an international student fee, because they're not a U.S. citizen.
Oh, but, I mean, you don't know that when they enroll, right?
We, we're required by our federal guidelines on our enrollment to have them declare if they're a U.S. citizen or not, for our federal financial aid.
Yeah, for federal financial aid. I mean, but just enroll, that's not required, right?
Well, it's required, it's a required response in our iPads reporting and our K-Board reporting. So typically, what we do is if they don't declare, then it's considered an incomplete application, and we check back with them, because we don't want to make sure they missed it, and then don't get federal financial aid when they would have, because sometimes the student will skip it.
But people who live in the shadows and want to remain there would just answer that false or falsely, right?
That probably happens. I'm not sure.
I mean, I'd be full, Marty, to inform my...
Well, the thing, trustee Malone, that I think is really unfortunate, is that these numbers used to be higher, and there was no problem. They would do the affidavit, and then they would sign the documentation that they were a Dodge City High School student or a Kansas High School graduate. We'd get the diploma, we'd put everything through the process, it would work very well, and they would get the Kansas tuition rate. And they would go through here, and they would graduate and be successful. Then, when the changes with the, and most of them, if not all, probably all, were going through the DACA process, and when that changed and all the discussion happened on that, they disappeared. Some of them dropped midterm, some of them didn't come back the next term, and it's just less and less each time. So, you know, we watch that closely. I wish it would change somewhat.
Well, I mean, I agree. I think they maybe not do it, or revealing that because out of fear rather than anything else.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
All right. Anything further? Thank you all for your great efforts on this. I think we've been a little behind the times.
Keep on, keep on.
Selling our school, and it's time we get out there and earn our students. Okay. Next up on reports, Dr. Cersei, online offerings.
Good evening, Chair, Dr. Nolte, and board members. I think the way I'm looking at online is we're going to have to make some decisions. I think we're in the process of making decisions about how we want to pursue growth in online, what are really, where our goals are, where we're going to find our students. We certainly have some capacity right now. We could easily have more students for a while. Eventually, that will lead to us having to have some more staffing in place, especially on evenings and weekends, to, especially early in the term, when you're trying to get people on board and make sure that they really understand how to log into the course, that they are logging into their course. We're kind of taking that out of the woodwork right now and doing some of that, which we can do for probably maybe a fifty percent enrollment increase. After that, we'd get very difficult. One of the things we have to figure out is how we're going to recruit online students. That's in the report I gave you, and that's going to take some thought. It may be very well, we will be recruiting them out of Arizona as part of the, in support of the aviation program. That would be good, and that may take up that fifty percent initial growth. But I think, right now, we ask for really a report on where we are, and I've shown we've had quite a bit of growth over the last three or four years. We've done that by expanding our offerings quite a bit. We've added quite a number of courses that are good for us, you know, that have proven enrollment, actually with Educan, and we've kind of just literally borrowed their, our students back from Educan in many ways, and offered it ourselves, brought it in-house. We're not alone doing that. Hutchinson's done that a lot to Educan. That's one of the things where Educan's kind of struggling in a way is, is those who, colleges who've left and colleges like us have kind of said, well, we'll have that market share now that you've discovered it so nicely for us. So I think we have some potential to go in that direction. I think we're doing some good work on online. We have some good courses. They could always be better. We're actually working through some of the, some of the, some of the backend, if you will, of how to actually keep rolling out good courses from ones that have already been improved, making sure that if a faculty member comes up with a good change during the term, we capture that for the next term to go ahead. And those are things that eventually you need to really formalize, and that might take even further investments beyond just the manpower that we're using now. There's some good potential there. We just have to decide how we invest our time and effort to make it happen. So, any questions?
Is there a problem with finding instructors who are willing to do online?
No. You... No, you, you can put it out there, there's a lot, what you find out is you've got a lot of faculty either that are sort of adjuncting somewhere and like somebody's spouse in a big city who are very underutilized and underemployed, who are very happy to become your faculty member and teaches an adjunct for you and, and teach quite a number of credits. It's not really hard to find qualified or good faculty, they have to leave where they are. They can be in Chicago, Denver, wherever.
A couple of our former faculty still teach at Chicago.
Yes, right, yes. Yeah, and we've, we've kept some of them when they leave and they know our system and they have good courses and we like working with them too. So, I don't think faculty, faculty is another problem, problem.
I'm excited about this, I think this is where the growth is and if we, if we don't move forward with more of this, then we're left behind and we'll lose even more students because this is how people are learning.
Yep. And you don't need new buildings or anything, buy more computer space, hire more faculty, you might have to put more effort into managing it, but.
That's how Colby's been able to grow, with, with, you know, they're right next to Colorado and Oklahoma and that's, you'll notice on their, they've, they've been growing and that's how they, that's how they've done it. You know, in Nebraska too. And, you know, it's, it's one of those things that, it's not a problem finding faculty because what, what, the interesting thing, those students are going to, they're going to take it somewhere, I can promise you they're going to take it somewhere. And in my two institutions before, what happened was is you hire somebody from another, an instructor from another place, they're going to not bother your students, they're going to, they're going to go ahead and help get their stu, their students they have there on that campus to, to go ahead and take those classes. So, it's, it's, it's growth. And your non-traditional students, you know, that's, that's how they, that's how they're, it's done. And if you think about it, if you, you know, kids or grandkids, I mean, my, my daughter doesn't leave the house without, without, about three or four, you know, things that are techie, so.
I think it's particularly important where we come into a situation with the students who might need something they don't have to finish their degree and this is the way they can get it. I just am really in favor of supporting the online programs. It's not for everybody, we know that.
Barton uses it for military a lot. Well, I think, you know, as any, any walk of life, any business has to adapt to the changing times, the needs of people, otherwise they become irrelevant. So, I think this is good, I think that's changing demographics show us that, that the online, look at our part-time has nearly doubled. So, that I've sent as signals that things are changing, but I, there's no, still no replacement for face-to-face. And this will help us build programs so that we can be better in those face-to-face and attract good students and good faculty to do those. So, anywhere where we can grow, I think we need to do so and I've heard that in a class presentation about how we're trying to grow and build programs and this is, this is well in line with that.
Any further questions for Scott? All right.
Keep, keep going.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on to board action items. So, first, the administrative appointment of treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, one thing we need to do before we get into this, we need to introduce Lisa O'Neil from the RSVP program.
No, I.
Lisa, she's taken over again for when we were in the line.
Lisa, yeah.
Oh, I bet you were going to do that, I'm sorry.
No, no, Lisa, go ahead, Ford.
I'm sorry.
No, Lisa, thank you.
Okay. And I think there's one other thing we need to mention, the artist who did our wonderful pumpkin.
Was it Dan? Right, Dan? That's Dan for sure.
Dr. Forghee.
Dr. Forghee. From, from this angle, that pumpkin did look real. It's not.
It's not, it's not real. I, I would not spend 15 hours on, on something like that to be thrown away.
Also, we'll see it, that means we'll see it next year too, okay, okay.
It's in the bookstores.
I'll teach you to do the ones I do out there, out at the pumpkin farm and they have triangle eyes and triangle.
And dragon teeth.
I do several of those a day, so I'm getting good at it.
Okay.
That's it.
Good to move on, so welcome. I thank you and I did not see you behind, Dr. Jane, so thank you. Okay, so, next up, item A, administrative appointment of treasurer, Dr. Nolte.
You know, I thank you all for allowing me be the treasurer, but I'm respectfully glad to give this part up. I think I've been signing documents lately and it's, Carla brings them to me and it's, 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 it's pretty ominous. I'm enjoying looking at everything, I really am, but it, but it is, so I would, and now that we do have a CFO, I would like to hand it over to him, so. Am I allowed to do that?
Right, okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So, let me.
Okay, Jeremy first, Terry second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 And we are happy too.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, next item, update on the Sunfire Community Garden. So, last meeting, we brought this up and reviewed the two different leases which had expired in 2015, just recommended that we terminate these leases and look forward to one that might be more up to date.
I move that we, I don't want to say expire them, but I, I.
Terminate them.
Terminate them, yes.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
To approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Terry's second? Okay, all those in, any further discussion?
I, well, I have a question, are we, is it our intent to renew this with the community garden folks? They need to present, as discussed from last meeting, they need to present us a new lease to consider. So, I figured the first step would be to terminate this and so they had clearer direction of where we are and then it's up to them to present us with a new lease. But is our underlying intent to renew this so those folks can continue to garden in that spot or?
I think when we get the new lease, we'll review the lease and have that discussion. Be premature at this time, I think.
I mean, the point, the, the big thing is, and the point I brought up, and it's even under minutes from last meeting, is I just want to make sure that the new lease, personally, me speaking for me, that the new lease addresses some concerns so that future problems don't come of the community garden, so that it doesn't have to be relocated or trees don't have to be taken down again or things like that. The point I brought up, and we all have a map laying on our desk and we all know the proposal for, or there's a potential proposal for the, the street through that, near that area and so I just hope with that new lease that maybe we can restructure that and make it so that this isn't a perpetual problem for future trustees and the community garden folks, because they don't want to keep moving their stuff either. So, that's what I'd like to see in the new lease.
Gary, do you want the garden to get a hold of Glenn?
I, he, he will be our counsel to review those things, yes.
What was that thing, Dan?
But then I think that, then we'll have a, yeah.
I'd like to see the community garden board.
Don't go ahead, Anne.
Anne, could you come up just so that everybody can hear you? Well, but they, not on the TV.
Not on the TV.
The people on the TV can't even hear us with these things, infernos, most of the times, they tell us at least, so.
Yep. Ladies and gentlemen, this has just been an awesome thing for the community of Dodge City. I stand as the co-chair of the Sunfire Community Garden. Nature's Corner has been very happy to be a part of it. I'm sure as you well know, we just raised over 200. Well, last year we raised 250 for the Circle of Hope that were raised, the pumpkins were raised at the community garden and this year, our gardeners have raised 105 pumpkins, which are pink for breast cancer and the, the money from the sale of the seeds, from my purchase of the seeds and then the sale of the pumpkins, all that money goes to the Circle of Hope, again promoting Dodge City Community College. I understand there have been some problems and, but gardens don't always look great. Everybody that gardens knows that and some people get very enthusiastic in the spring and then by the time it gets kind of hot, they're not quite so enthusiastic. And so consequently, we don't always know when they abandon their plots, which ends up looking not quite as nice and neat and tidy. And so, I hope as a board, you will certainly consider the goodwill that has gone to the people of Dodge City. We, we have, the city has been more than generous and the college was too and I hope that you continue that practice and renew it. If you have problems, write us things that you want us to address and we'll be glad to. But we have never had a complaint down at the, the Division Garden, which is our other garden and we have, you know, where else can you get a plot of land of the 800 square feet for $25? I mean, we don't, we don't make a great amount of money, but we charge enough so that when the first gardener, the first year they, they come, then they leave a deposit so in case they do abandon it, we can rotate the garden and clean it up. We just have had kind of a funding problem, but you know, one thing that surprised me is that the college has not embraced this also. I don't know why the botany and the biology teachers are not out there planting and putting things in that they can use in their classes and use them as a training. So, I, I hope that you will consider this and thank you for giving me the time. I know I kind of butted in, but that's, I felt I had to.
We had a.
We do have pink pumpkins, we hid them all from the frost and they're sleeping.
We had a pretty, pretty lengthy discussion last time and so I thought I would look for an old training manual that I had when I was three or four years old and my children had when they were three or four. And it has to do with planting your garden, tending your garden, harvesting your garden and you get the fruits of those gardens and that, it doesn't belong to the whole community. So, if you'll go through that red hen training, training manual, I think it'll catch you up to what gardening is all about.
Okay, there is a motion and a second on the floor. And any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, I think, Maya, that was, that was for approval, right?
Yes.
I wanted to make sure because I, it was about the same time, so I want to get it registered, right? Okay, fair enough. All right, resolution number 2018 dash 09. Dr. Forghee?
Whenever you have a new CFO, there are a lot of housekeeping activities to be done and this is one of those. This designates the Fidelity State Bank as an official depository bank and adds me as the authority to make decisions regarding that.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Okay, I'm giving you a pause there, Maya. Okay, next up, certification from Fidelity State Bank and Trust.
Very similar, this gives you authority to have me added to make inquiries, stop payments and do other financial transactions, but I will be staying paid.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second to second, Jeremy, all, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, all right, item E, designating official depository bank.
We have several banks for which we deposit funds, use CDs and investments and this adds me to those to make decisions regarding those accounts.
Okay.
I move.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Jeremy, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right, approved. All right, so then we'll move to the State of Kansas Municipal Investment Pool Resolution.
My addition.
You missed F.
Uh, don't miss F?
Yeah.
I'm getting happy with my pen, I already crossed it out.
Safety deposit box.
All right, pardon me. Resolution 2018 dash 11, safety deposit box at Fidelity State Bank.
This adds me to get access to the safe deposit box, I don't want you to have in it, it gives me access.
Okay.
Oh, backup takes, okay.
Okay.
So, for tornado hits, no, we're in trouble. All right? Okay.
It has happened.
It has happened. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Last one was at a board meeting.
Yes, it was.
It was.
I'll second.
There's a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Now, we'll move on to item E, Municipal Investment Pool Resolution.
And this one adds me to the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool, this is where we have most of our money, it earns quite a bit of interest there, better than some of the rest around local, although we do have some CDs local that adds me to that account as well.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Is that fourteen? All right, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, so now we'll move on to the computers for the technical center computing lab. Dean Ossis.
Yes, Chairman, President Nolte, Board Trustees, once again, good evening. So, as is in the recommendation, seeking approval to replace 29 computers in our technical center lab, that lab sits right behind us here on the west side of campus. It's, I, I think I put in the recommendation, it's been several years to be honest, I don't know what year it was when we last replaced them, but long enough to where I can say it's been several, several, several years. So, this is a Perkins pre-approved expense, it was already written into the, into the grant, which was approved for, for this, this purchase. Any questions?
I move, approval.
Second. That was quick. Any further discussion?
Just have a question. Are the old ones worth adding?
I, well, I would probably defer to Mike, I don't know where he went, but yeah, it would be worth something, but I think those were also purchased with Perkins funds by the college.
I'm just curious.
So, there's a process of, if we're selling or getting rid of the equipment that was purchased with the grant, but yeah, I'm sure there's some kind of value there for sure.
Sorry. Okay, fair enough. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, same sign. Okay.
That's your pass.
All right. Uh, there's no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business, the board meeting buffet. So, this is initiated by trustee Malone.
Well, I, I, we had indicated that we were looking for ways to reduce spending, spending, I guess, and I don't think we had that when I first started in 1989. I think it came about feeding the board and others sometime in the 90s, probably early 90s. But I think that we have a great cafeteria if we want to eat before we have a meeting. I think the trustees probably ought to go through the line.
Okay.
That's, I don't know what it costs, you.
$300 a.
$300 a meeting?
A month.
$300 a meeting?
A month.
A month for a board meeting?
For the board meeting, we just do it for the board meeting.
Well, I've been to other meetings and there's things in there to eat, I don't, not a full meal like that, but there's snacks or things, also supplies there. But, you know, it just seems to me like maybe there's 10 or 12 people in there and that's $30 a person. Seems like fairly expensive food when everybody could go through the line, pay for their own. Food is good, you just talk to students who are going up to eat and ask them how the food was and say, "It's good." So, you know, could go through the line and do away with that expense, I think. I think it's very expensive for the number of people that actually go in there and eat.
It's, it's hard to know how many to, you know, I guess, prepare for. It's hard to know how many to, you know, I guess, prepare for, because I think all the people that address the board are invited, and staff are there as well, so I don't know when this got started, right, early 90s made it?
I think Terry's probably right on that time, and when we did that, we didn't used to. But it was so obvious that some people had to hurry from work and had not had time to eat something, and that's, that's not real healthy if you're having a late meeting, which we did a lot of times then, more than now. And it was also not only a, a convenience and a service to the people who were making things go, but it also was a time for some cohesiveness, some discussion on everything that goes on in the world, family time, and a time for a lot of people to get acquainted that didn't know each other, and build some working relationships. I thought it was a good move, and the high school was doing it, which we knew before we did, and I still think it's an important time to build that cohesiveness and to maybe have an opportunity to visit with somebody that you didn't have an opportunity to visit, maybe about something that we needed to know about. We've had some times when there were questions we had that really weren't answered, and that was an opportunity to find them. So I share that we need to be very, very scrupulous about our money, but I do not share that we should not do any of the things that make us more, make us stronger together, and I believe that does. So I don't feel that strongly either way, but I would like to say that I thought it was a good idea at the time, and I still feel that there is a positive to it.
I don't think 443 does this. I mean, I was president of the board for six years, and we only had two meals in all six years.
Ryan knows.
We do not eat meals in our board.
No, or before the meeting.
Well, I agree with what Forrest Dean has said, I, I was, I'm just saying we ought to go through the line, because we have a good cafeteria, and, and make it a point to be cohesive.
Well, I don't object to going through the line, do you?
I'm not, yeah.
Go through the line, pay for our, our own food.
The only thing that I see is, I really truly believe that the staff and the people that leave their classroom or their office, and they come directly here, I hate to see them not have that.
Well, it takes a few minutes to go through the line, they can go through the line too, they have paychecks. You know, it, it doesn't take much time to go through that line, I've done it before, and the food is good, it's good on the line, students enjoy it.
Well, Terry also made one other point about it being a coma situation, and that's not a problem. All we need to do is, Carla, add that there's a possibility there will be a majority of...
No, we don't usually discuss any business in the...
No, we don't discuss college business until we get into the room unless there is some question, as I said a while ago, that we can talk to one person about maybe, but we're not going to go in there and make a discussion and decision.
The, I just, I think I, whatever notice we gave, or Carla gave, or we gave on this one is, I think that covers it as far as coma problem.
Well, you know, I'm somewhat indifferent, but, you know, it seems to me, you think about staff, like you said, coming from work direct to here, and then our guests, it just seems to be a function of hospitality that, that we would be sorely lacking on, but, you know, I, I do applaud people's efforts to look at way to save money. Terry, I kind of look at your actions here somewhat interestingly, because here last year, you took us into a coma violation that cost us between $6,000 and $10,000.
And just think, you voted for, you voted to sell our land for 500, and what it was worth 270.
No, that was not the understanding.
No, that was not the understanding, that's an absolute lie, Terry.
Well, no, it's not a lie.
Because they said, he told us at the time, they would make us good with the value.
No, they didn't.
Yes, they did.
No, they didn't.
Yes, they did.
Fine, didn't they, their records?
Yes, they did.
Anyway.
He told us.
They, uh...
Well, you can't remember that like you can't remember the state approving agency pulling Universal Helicopters approval?
Well, I remember that.
When we all received a handout two weeks prior, then had a handout in the meeting, discussed it, two weeks later, he said, "Well, I didn't know anything about it."
No, I didn't say that.
No, you did. Yes, you did.
I want, I want to know what the...
Yes, you did. And besides that, you turned us in anonymously for Title IX violation, that's costing them right now over $20,000.
Really?
Yeah.
Even if we're in violation of Title IX?
Pardon?
I mean, so we're, we are in violation of that?
No, we found, we were found, and none of these applied to us.
What's that?
But still, we were found that these did not apply, but you still cost us...
Well, I haven't...
$6,000 to $10,000 on coma, $20,000 on Title IX, a Maui trip that you took at taxpayer expense, and we still haven't got a report on, so you've cost us tens of thousands of dollars, and you're quibbling over $300 a meal?
I am...
That's disingenuous.
I'm quibbling over $35 million in debt that the board in the past compiled, right? The, yeah, does that bother you?
Well, of course it bothers.
Okay, of course, well, how do you think that happened? I'm, I...
Like people suing us? Oh, then, then you and your friend Antash sue the, the school for fees and tuition?
Why don't you just...
So how much money is the college spending on legal fees at your expense? How much money is the college spending on legal fees at your expense?
I think this is a discussion for another time.
I'm telling you what is costing us so far.
Wait, I think you're full of baloney.
What are we talking about? You think I'm full of baloney?
Yeah.
Well, no, these are pretty much here.
Well, no, they're...
Yes, yeah. Pretty much.
I can tell you how it's, the board has cost this community by mismanagement, and I know that it's...
And you've been on the board for 19 years, Terry.
That's right.
19 years you've been on the board, and mismanagement?
When I left...
Holy cow!
And when I left the board in 2009, there was...
Holy cow, 19 years you've been a trustee.
Would you please let me finish? When I, 1.8 million dollars in debt in 2009, $35 million in debt when I returned.
Terry, you see these numbers where our enrollments are down?
Do you remember that?
You see these numbers where our enrollments are down? How much do you think this has to do with the negative crap you put out in the public about this school? How much do you think is directly tied to the negative publicity you put out?
I think it's directly tied to the...
Do you think that has any contribution to it?
No, I don't.
None?
I think it's probably more directly tied to your attitude.
My attitude?
Yes.
My attitude is to grow the school, and I'm citing you things where you're costing the school money.
Yeah.
With legal actions, incessant legal actions.
I haven't brought any legal action against this college, ever.
Coma? Coma? You didn't turn us in for a coma violation.
It's not a legal action.
We had to pay legal counsel to defend it, yes, that's a legal act.
Well, you've paid them $6,000, you paid them too much, it was a very simple matter. The, we were in violation of how we did go in.
Not according to coma, not according to coma, they said not.
No, they said, no.
Wrong.
You're right.
They suggested we have some training, but we were not in violation.
No, they said we're in violation of how we went into the meetings, remember? If you can explain the $35 million debt to people...
I wasn't on the board then, Terry!
What have you...
I'm trying to clean it up!
What have you done?
What have you done that cost us money?
We got three new dorms.
Yes, we did, in order to, for the Ford County tax, taxpayers to pay for out-of-state residents to live in them. So we're, we are subsidizing a couple hundred, three or $400 out-of-staters that don't pay their way.
That bring...
And that $20 million, $29 million that is associated with athletics is costing this college dearly, and our taxpayers.
They bring Pell Grants, they bring their...
Yes, plenty more people bring Pell Grants. They don't bring any state aid, and they don't pay their fair share.
Terry, Terry, your numbers are completely off. It's a good thing we now, we have Dr. Forgy here, can actually put numbers for us to actually see instead of your propaganda, and we'll actually know what we, what this is costing or bringing into the school, but right now, we don't know.
Well, we know how much they pay in tuition, Gary.
It is not a zero-sum game, Terry.
Well, I...
It is a very dynamic situation, and if you're going to sit there and say, "All right, we're going to get rid of sports," who's going to live in the dorm? And oh, by the way, those are revenue bonds. What your actions are going to do is dump all that cost onto the taxpayers, is what you want to do.
No, Gary, I'm trying to save the taxpayers' money, and I'd be glad to explain it to you.
What you're doing isn't doing that, so we're moving on.
Well, we're not doing it because we haven't done anything.
I have a suggestion for the buffet.
I move that we quit it, because we're not ready to sit down and eat together, so I'll go ahead and make a motion, and we'll probably just go ahead and get rid of the buffet, we'll figure out how to eat.
I second it.
Second, all right, I'll call...
It's not an action item, it's a discussion item. Well, we'll bring it up next month.
I'll, I'll make the motion next month, you go ahead and...
You do that.
I, I do have a, as long as, if we're going to look at the buffet, we need to look at our travel, we need to look at other areas.
Sure.
And our finances that we, we need to save on, besides just the buffet, because I think we can look at all of that.
You have, you have... We have an alternate thing, you can go through the, the line out here to, if you need a meal.
The training is offered at different places, and meetings are offered different places, and that, that some of us should go to, okay? You can't substitute that in and walk across the street and, and get that training, you know, that you're going to get at a convention, so the two are not even remotely related to each other.
They are savings.
You know, maybe savings, but at what expense? You know, I, I just don't think we ought to be spending $20 to $30 per person to, to eat before, before the board meeting, anyway.
I move to reapprove the consent agenda as presented tonight.
Second. All right, there is a motion, there's a, there's a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, Maya, I heard you as an aye for approve, right? Okay, all right. Do we need to take a brief bio break before we head into executive session?
Some of you need some fresh air.
Okay, then let's move to recess until 7:30, give us seven, eight minutes. Meeting is adjourned. Okay, we are now back in session, and I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss negotiations with the professional relations community of the Dot City Community College, faculty associations. For the 2018-19 school year, contract pursuit to the employer, employee negotiation exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Record Act, KSA 75-4319B3. The open meeting to resume at this location at 7:48. In addition to the trustees, the president, vice president, Jane, Vice President Hoorda, Vice President Forgy shall also be included in the executive second session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, that was a four, I'm sure. Okay, we are now, okay, we are now back in session, there was no action taken, and we need to go into a second executive session, so I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss the grand jury subpoena, alleged VA overpayment and related matters pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume at this location at 8:20, oh, excuse me, 8:10, 8:10.
Please.
And in addition to the trustees, the president, Provost John, and Attorney Alan Baskins should be included in this executive session.
And I would also like Dr. Forgy to be there also.
Dr. Forgy?
Sorry.
Okay, we will now, I'll take a motion to go into executive session. So moved.
I'll second.
Second, okay, all those, Kathy, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, we are now in executive, okay, we are now back in session, and no action was taken, but we will need to extend our executive session by another 15 minutes to resume in this location. At 8:28, and I, I need to reread this, I do. I think that's, I recommend that the board recess into executive session to discuss the grand jury subpoena, alleged VA overpayment and related matters pursuant to the attorney -client privilege, exception to the Kansas Opens Meeting Act, KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting to resume at this location at 8:28.